Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand and join me at the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Phlongas.
Here.
Vice Chair Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Goings.
Present.
Commissioner Trusdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Slotman.
Present.
And Commissioner Bonar.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We would appreciate greatly your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you in advance. We're going to item number four, which is public comment. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five. Sir, you're gonna have to come down to the podium. Sir, you need to come to the podium. We can't talk across the auditorium.
I'm Temay Holdup. I was asking, was that pertaining to public speaking? Is that what you were saying?
Do you want to comment on any item that's on the agenda?
Oh, no. I was asking, was it pertaining to public speaking for not the agendas on the items that you're showing?
We're strictly here to deal with what's on the agenda tonight, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Going to item five is to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of February 11th, 2014, and March 11th, 2014?
Mr. Chair, the motion is to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of February 11th, 2014, and March 11th, 2014.
Please post. The motion to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of February 11th, 2014, and March 11th, 2014 carries. Going on to item number six, which is our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Good afternoon or evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Chris Kemfer, is this the time that you would like me to ask that a particular item be held, or would you prefer that after you have this particular discussion?
I believe you're looking probably to hold items 12 through 15.
Yes, sir.
When we get to that point there, why don't we have you do it then?
All right. Whenever, whatever suits.
And the reason is, is I believe this is number four, so there's gonna have to be a showing of cause on that one.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kemfer, why don't you come back up? Let's go ahead and do it right now, because it doesn't look... I think we're gonna have one other item held, and that's item... Scratch that, I think. Go ahead. Let's just do that now, because I think you're the only item that's on to be held tonight.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Chris Kemfer actually fitting in, and filling in, rather, for Mr. Bob Gronauer, who asked that I present to you the fact that we've been working with Councilman Ross on a redesign of the plan. And so for us to move forward now, when we are going to be submitting a new plan in accordance, we hope, with the complete wishes and goals of Councilman Ross, would be imprudent. So we would respectfully request 30 days while we work with the Councilman. The owner of the property, we understand, has agreed to these things. We just need to have appropriate time to modify the plan and give it back to you.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for Mr. Kemfer through you. Would it be wise to table this? And I guess my question really is, can we get to this in the next 30 days and avoid having yet another abeyance next month?
I'm told, Commissioner, that... Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'm told, Commissioner, that we can get it done in 30 days, and that's what Mr. Gronauer has represented to me, that the owner of the property is now fully on board. That's what I have told, and that's what I'm stating based on what I've been told.
Okay.
So that was... I would hate to go back to Mr. Gronauer and tell him I let him down, you know, that I was unable to get a 30-day continuance for him on an item, so, anyway.
Thank you.
I hope, none others, I hope, would be necessary. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yes, Chairman, just a question for staff. If it does come back to us, and they ask for another abeyance, that'd be the fifth abeyance. What happens at that point?
That's through you, Mr. Chairman. Well, at that point, they would request another abeyance, and per state law, you would have to make a finding for cause in order to hold that item in abeyance for a fifth time, much like tonight. This is the fourth request. You do have to make a finding for cause pursuant to state law.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe Mr. Kemfer has stated good cause. I confirm that there have been discussions going on about redesign, and therefore I'd ask for a motion to obey this item for 30 days until our next Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. The motion to obey items number 12, 13, 14, and 15 carries to the meeting of May 13th, 2014.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. We're gonna be voting on items seven and eight. Does any applicant or any members of the Commission desire to have any items on the consent agenda pulled? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, the motion is for approval of items seven and eight on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote, or, excuse me, please post. Motion to approve items seven and eight carries.
Mr. Chairman, please note that item number seven will go forward to City Council in ordinance format, and item number eight is final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days.
Thank you. The following are... Excuse me, we're gonna move to the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Before I read it, I believe Commissioner Quinn, you want item number 11 pulled?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine is VAR 52810. The applicant owner is Ryland Homes Nevada LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a wall height of 15 feet for a 50-foot section of a perimeter wall adjacent to the Beltway, where 12 feet is the maximum height allowed on a portion of 7.97 acres located adjacent to the south side of Deer Springs Way, approximately 1,010 feet east of Wallop Highway in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 12 is SUP 52981. The applicant owner is Lola E. Pacorni. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 6,275 square-foot restaurant with alcohol use at 1220 North Town Center Drive in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Do any members of the Commission wish to be heard on items nine or 10? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, the motion is to approve items nine and 10 on the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. The motion to approve items nine and 10 carries.
Mr. Chairman, items nine and 10 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. We'll go on now to item number 11, which is SUP 52991. The applicant is Joseph Sirachi. Owner is Seabreeze Village LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed restaurant with alcohol use within an existing 5,548 square-foot restaurant with 420 square-foot outside seating at 1780 North Buffalo Drive, Suite 101, in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the use meets all Title 19.12 requirements for the restaurant with alcohol use and is compatible with the other restaurants, retail establishments, and office uses within the shopping center. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested special use permit with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we hear from the applicant, please? Good evening, ma'am. Could you state your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Monica Goldinas at 1780 North Buffalo Drive, Suite 101, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89128. I'm requesting approval for a special use permit to sell alcohol in our restaurant with patio seating located in the existing shopping center. Ms. Commissioner Quinn asked me to add another handicap parking space, and we don't have a problem doing that.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Thank you. I don't really think there is a discussion. There is a spot for that handicap parking place, so all you'd have to do is put the sign in and stripe it, and it was really nice meeting you, and I wish you lots of luck. So I'm gonna make a motion for approval of SUP 52991, adding that additional handicap parking space as an added condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion to approve item number 11 carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item goes forward to the May 21st City Council meeting.
Thank you. We're now in the public hearing items portion of the agenda, starting with item number 16, which is GPA 53055. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. Request to amend map 2A of the transportation and streets and highways element of the Las Vegas 2020 master plan to include assigning classifications and right-of-way alignments to several roadways in the northwest portion of the city. This is in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony, and Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this general plan amendment request is to update the transportation and streets and highways element of the city of Las Vegas 2020 master plan and to update the associated planned streets and highways map and schedule. An update to the transportation, streets, and highways element is required in order to add new roadway alignments and reclassify other roadway alignments in the area generally located west of Clark County 215 Beltway between Centennial Parkway and Low Mountain Road. This general plan amendment is requested so the city can plan the roadway networks in the area before development occurs. Placing the shambra alignment on the planned streets and highways map will make it eligible for funding from the Regional Transportation Commission. Therefore, staff is recommending approval. Please note that we have received one letter of support since publication, and I'm here to request your approval and answer any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, the motion is to approve item 16, GPA 53055, following staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve item 16 carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to the May 21st City Council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to related items 17, 18, and 19, beginning with item 17, which is GPA 52964. The applicant owner is the Church Mount Sinai missionary. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from MLA, which is medium-low attached-density residential to PF Public Facilities at the northeast and southeast corner of Concord Street and Balzahar Avenue in Ward 5, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 18, ZON 52961, for possible action on a request for rezoning from R2 Medium Low Density Residential to C V Civic. Staff is recommending approval. Last related item 19 is SDR 52956, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review to add religious classrooms and offices to an existing religious facility. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the items before you were previously tabled at the January 8th, 2013 Planning Commission meeting at the applicant's request. This is a request to expand an existing church-house of worship in a residential area of the West Las Vegas Plan via the conversion of four adjacent residential dwellings. This use was legally established via special use permit in 2000. Conditions were added at the time to minimize the negative impacts the use would have on adjacent residential neighborhood. Many of those conditions were not met, such as providing trash enclosures, screening the mechanical equipment, installing six-foot-tall fence, and providing additional landscaping. If the proposed general plan amendment rezoning are approved, the special use permit will no longer be required. These new designations would also allow maximum flexibility with design standards required for the project. Staff supports the general plan amendment and rezoning applications as they reflect the most appropriate designations for the church-house worship use. However, the site development plan review submitted is not compatible. Staff finds that the submitted site development plan review, if approved, would greatly expand this use and likewise expand the negative impact on the area. Please note that an additional letter of support has been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, and good evening, if you could state your names and addresses, please?
I'm Dr. SS Rogers, pastor, teacher of the Great Mount Sinai Missionary, recruiting ministry, senior pastor, residing at 3407 West Stadium Court in off Las Vegas, my resident. My trade site is 1025 Balzahar Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada.
My name is Franz Mormon. I live at 2417 Raymond Avenue, north Las Vegas, and my church home is Mount Sinai.
Thank you.
I see a request that 19... I would like to know about something. We are not adding any religious office or classrooms in any of these facilities. I don't know what add-on came, but we're not adding anything to the building just as they are. We would like to request for occupancy on these property rezoning from resident to commercial sites.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Goings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been an item that we've worked on more than once, and I know the pastor has been back on this item and has, in between there, has met with Councilman Bartle and his staff to tighten up a few loose ends. This item is now before us with a recommendation for approval on both the GPA and the zoning, which I fully support, and as well as for item 19, which is, although we're looking at the existing buildings, that they already have a blueprint for the room, so I'm gonna also recommend approval on that item as well. So if there are no more questions from the Commission, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and offer a motion.
Commissioner Slotman? Yes, Chairman, through you. If we approve this SDR tonight, will this expunge the requirement that they need to add the trash enclosure or the screening of the mechanical equipment? And is that conditions on the new SDR?
Mr. Chairman, to respond to Commissioner Slotman's request or question, item number six addresses the issue of the trash enclosure, and so we do have those issues addressed in the conditions of approval. So if you are to recommend approval of the items, those conditions will be in place.
Okay. And one more question through the Chairman. How do we ensure that conditions actually get met when we approve these applications? Because sometimes we hear of stuff coming back five, six years down the road. Is there a process we have in place to ensure that these conditions are being met?
Mr. Chairman, through you. All site plan reviews and special use permits are subject to annual inspections by code enforcement. They check for code compliance, including conditions of approval approved by Planning Commission and City Council. In addition, this site is also going through the process of getting CFOs for the additional added buildings, and that has not been accomplished yet. So there will be an actual inspection upon submission of the tenant improvement plans for these buildings.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goings?
On item 17, GPA 52964, moved as follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 17 carries.
On item 18, ZON 52961, move for approval subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. Motion to approve item 18 carries.
And on item 19, SDR 52956, move for approval subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 19 carries.
Mr. Chairman, please note that these items will go forward to the May 21st City Council meeting.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Going on now to related items 20 and 21. Item 20 is GPA 53013. The applicant owner is RIV Living Trust. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from Rural Density Residential to SC Service Commercial on the north side of Lake Mead Boulevard, west of Decatur, in Ward 5, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending approval. Related item 21, which is ZON 53014, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE Residential Estates to C1 Limited Commercial. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this subject site is located on a primary arterial street with a width of 100 feet and is less than 300 feet from the intersection of another primary arterial street. The property is located between this parcel and the intersection, our zone C1 Limited Commercial. This parcel is unlikely to be developed as a single-family residential property, given the adjacent commercial development and the commercial development on the south side of the street. The best and most compatible use for the area would be for this property to be developed as a commercial property. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both the general plan amendment and rezoning applications. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May I hear from the applicant, please? And good evening, if you'll state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners John Vaughan-San, 62 Swan Circle-Henderson, representing the owner and applicant. The Ivy family has owned this property for many years. I believe it's been at least about 30 years. As indicated by staff, directly to our east is a C1 Zone dog grooming and boarding facility. To the east of that is a C1-zoned auto repair shop at the intersection of Decatur and Lake Mead. Directly to the south is a C1-zone shopping center across Lake Mead. To our west and north is single-family homes within the existing Curtis Park Manor. They are zoned RE and located within the unincorporated county area. This is literally the last residential lot that fronts on and has Lake Mead Boulevard as its only access, at least on West Lake Mead Boulevard. The last single-family home that faces toward Lake Mead Boulevard and has its only access was built about 25 years ago. Most of the residences within Curtis Park Manor to the west and the north, along Lake Mead Boulevard in particular to the west, were built about 30 to 60 years ago. At that time, of course, it goes without saying that Lake Mead Boulevard was more like a two-lane country road. Today, it's 100-foot-wide major thoroughfare with approximately averaging 20,000 vehicles per day. To construct a new residence facing on Lake Mead Boulevard today would constitute, in my opinion, poor planning practice, because it is such a heavily-traffic thoroughfare and is adjacent to commercial to the east and the south. This is also evidenced by the fact that no entity within the valley that I'm aware of has allowed new residential to front on any major thoroughfare such as this for the past many years. This has been a problem parcel for the owner over the past years. It's been a problem with vagrants on the property, with trash, with illegal dumping and so on. They eventually had to put up a chain-link fence. There is still trash and illegal dumping that does occur on the property, and the owner has had to clean this up at least annually to cost of many thousands of dollars over the year. We have no... And I do have photographs, by the way, if the Commission would like to see them, of the area. The driveway, for example, across Lake Mead Boulevard coming from that shopping center aims directly into this parcel. Again, we have no specific plans at this time. Would like to get the property rezoned before the expense of coming up with final plans. We did have a prototype plan done. I do have that plan with me, again, if the Commission would like to see it. Once we provide the necessary parking under the Development Code, the landscaping that's required, including intense landscaping buffers to the north and the west, it looks like it's gonna be about a 2,000-square-foot building. This could be anything from a veterinarian clinic to some type of a neighborhood retail kind of an establishment. We would respectfully request that the Commission follow staff's recommendation for approval and glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on these items? Sir, if you want to come up and state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is William Dome. I live at 4924 West Lake Mead, which is right next door to this vacant lot. I believe you have in your possession a petition of over 230 names of residents in Curtis Park who oppose this rezoning from RE Residential to C1 Commercial. I might also add that in 2007, this property was trying to be rezoned as CP, and at that time, we defeated that proposal. And I would hope for your vote again today to defeat this proposal again, to let this property remain as residential. I do have some comments that some of these residents have made to me, and if you'd bear with me here, it would probably be in the interest of time just to go ahead and read this.
Please do, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay. The half-acre lot, APN 1382461064, is looking to re- The half-acre lot, APN one-thirty-eight-twenty-four-six-eleven-oh-sixty-four is looking to rezone from RE Residential to C-one Commercial. This lot is already zoned for a single-family residence. I have submitted a six-page petition of over two-hundred-and-thirty names of residents and owners of Curtis Park Manor.
Excuse me, sir, I don't mean to interrupt. Just back away from the mic just a hair bit. Thank you.
Sorry, guys. Okay. This better? Right there? Okay. Sorry about that. I should have tested the mic. I have submitted a six-page petition of over two-hundred-and-thirty names of residents and owners of Curtis Park Manor who oppose this zoning change. They request that the lot remain as residential zoning. We do not want West Lake Mead Boulevard to become another Decatur or Jones Boulevard with mixed residential and commercial businesses, and they were very, very adamant about that. And I think you know what happened to Decatur, you know what happened to Jones, as businesses started to creep into the neighborhood, and it was, it became a mess, people had to move out. We do not want mixed residential and commercial businesses. We love our homes, and we do not want to move, and that's a lot of the consideration there. These are long-term owners and older residents of a twelve-block area who want their neighborhood to remain as single-family homes. There are already vacant commercial offices across the street from this vacant lot. I counted five storefronts that are vacant. Okay? We do not need any more commercial buildings in our neighborhood, and certainly not across the streets, since we already have vacant ones across the street from us. We have enough blown trash from alleys and noise from garbage trucks at night. There is also too much noise from barking dogs at night. The reason that this came up was that there was a proposal that the Dog Hotel next to the vacant lot on the other side wanted to expand their building, and the residents made this comment. We would not appreciate more dogging, barking dogs as a business on this property. There is also the possibility that rezoning this property to commercial, that it could be sold someday with adjacent commercial lots, and that's the lots that Mr. Versand mentioned here just a few minutes ago that are already zoned as C-one. They're afraid that they could combine this property and possibly someday put in another huge shopping center like Food for Less, which is also across the street. I might add that all of the businesses, generally speaking, are across on the south side of Lake Mead, and we are located on the north side of Lake Mead. And this is where most of the residences are, and there's at least twenty, twenty-five residents on the north side of Lake Mead that are single-family homes, and they would like to continue this arrangement. This would create more blown trash, sicklers and trash in the neighborhood, and is definitely not acceptable. We have enough vacant shopping centers near us. Look at the corner of Lake Mead and Jones, and I think you all know about Lake Mead and Jones, the buildings there being vacant in the disaster area, and definitely a crime area, which they would be concerned about should two shopping centers become vacant, which has happened. Across the street, I've seen as many as ten of those buildings vacant. Two questions that they've asked here. This property is already zoned as residential in a residential neighborhood. Why do we have to keep fighting to keep it residential? We would love to see Rhonda Ivy build a home on this property and become a neighbor. How would you feel in your own neighborhoods if someone bought a lot zoned as residential next door to you and then decided to build a business on it, just to make a huge profit? It's a good question. If they built an alley or a parking lot next door to you, would you like that? I don't think so. A vote no on this rezoning is a vote to keep our neighborhood as single-family homes and keep commercial buildings in commercial areas. Thank you, and please vote for us. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the Commissioner Bowden?
Yeah, I wonder if I could ask Mister Dome, is it? Is your house in the city or the county?
My house is in the county.
You might want to put, go by the...
That is the city-county line.
That's correct. So the lines between your house and this vacant property.
Right. And I'm right next door to the property. She's in the city, I'm in the county. My neighbors are in the county. I believe there are city-county mixed throughout.
If, if you had this lot, what would you do on it? Would you build a house for rent even? Would you build a house on it for rent?
I, I have found, actually found a person that would like to buy that property and build a house on it. I don't know if they have any money. I didn't check their financials, but...
Well, that's an important part. And there's a question is, you make it sound like profit's a dirty word, but the person that owns the property, whether they've owned it a day or ten years, they want to do something with the property, and so far, they've been precluded because you were so successful and fast.
I understand that.
I got to say that I was impressed by the number of people you got to sign, but I've, I've observed a lot of, we'll call this infill properties, and many of which have been on the city-county border, that you've got to look at the jurisdiction you're in to see what that jurisdiction is trying to do for itself. And I'm afraid that, at least in this commissioner's opinion, you've been kind of selfish. I mean, this property could have been developed a long time ago with something that had to be, could have been designed well if you'd have, if you'd have worked with the property instead of just plain denying its ability to move forward.
Well, one of the...
Again, I'm impressed by the number of signatures you have, but something's got to happen with this property, and I think a low density, a low intensity commercial use like they're asking for is not out of the question.
One of the problems with that that we could see was that, should this property be rezoned to commercial, even as a limited C-one commercial, that generally speaking, people lose interest when it's zoned as anything commercial, and if they ever wanted to build a parking lot, or if they wanted to build a, a huge enterprise in there and all of them got together and sold their, their businesses and tore them down or what have you.
You're speculating on that now. You're not going to get a sniff on this property.
But we saw it happen across the street. I've lived in my home since nineteen seventy, very early nineteen seventies, about nineteen seventy-seven, and I saw them come in, rezone the residential properties across the street, and build Smith's Food King over there.
Right.
So I know it can be done. I know that they could come in, they could level that property, and they could put another, another shopping center in it.
It's an awful, awful odd shape to get even all those existing C-one properties coagulated to another center. That center's, center that's there is going to be the last big center in that intersection.
One of the problems that I had in two thousand and seven, which I mentioned, was that they wanted to put an alley, they wanted to put an L-shaped building in there, and it was going to go from my property line all the way to Decatur, and the alleyway was going to be next to my property.
The what was going to be next to you?
In the alleyway, they was going to make an L-shaped building.
An alleyway, okay.
And the alleyway was going to be next to my property.
Is that your RV, though? You see in the pictures?
Yes, it is.
Long there, in other words.
Right. And actually, that wouldn't help my property value to have an alleyway next to my property and certain...
Some people don't like to live next to an RV parked out there, too.
Well, that's true.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Commissioner Goins?
Just real quick, I agree with the, the applicant. I've gone by this property every day. My old office was there for about five years. It is an eyesore. If we were talking about the piece that was further west on Leonard, I, I would be opposed to putting that to C-one, because it does encroach right in the middle of the neighborhood. This is on a, what, hundred, hundred-and-twenty wide street? You've got a bus stop there. We've heard the traffic count. While I understand there's residents that have lived on Lake Mead for a long time, but as the years gone by, this has had transition, and this corner is certainly a commercial. I don't think going one more lot in, abutting a service commercial is going to cause any adverse harm to the neighborhood. Therefore, I can support the request.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman. I went both ways on this, and typically, I would see a hundred-and-fifty-four signatures and go with the neighbors on this. One of the things is, it's directly across the street from a pretty significantly large commercial shopping center. However, with seeing that many signatures, I think we'll see this back before us again whenever a project's proposed, and I think at that point, we need to really sit down with the neighbors and work with them real, real closely, because to work on landscape buffering between their house and/or all the residential and your particular property, and I think I feel comfortable with the zone change, but if you can't work it out with the neighbors when you bring back a SDR in the future, I don't think I'll be able to support this in any fashion. Thank you.
One of the problems...
Excuse me, sir. This is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, on item twenty, GPA five-three-zero-one-three, move for approval subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mister Sloman? Thank you.
Motion to approve item twenty carries.
Item twenty-one, Z O N five-three-zero-one-four, move to follow staff's recommendations for approval subject to all condition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item twenty-one carries.
Thank you very much.
Mister Chairman, these items go forward to the May twenty-first City Council meeting.
Thank you. Move on now to related items twenty-two and twenty-three, beginning with item twenty-two, which is GPA five-three-zero-one-six. The applicant owner is Drock Third Street LLC for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from PF Public Facilities to GC General Commercial at two-hundred South Third Street in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty-three is Z O N five-three-zero-one-seven, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from CV Civic to C-two General Commercial. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may I have a report, please?
Mister Chairman, the subject site was previously the location of the City of Las Vegas Courthouse Building. The owner has demolished the old government facility and is constructing a temporary commercial parking lot. As a result, the subject site is absent of any government facilities, and the current general plan and zoning designations meant for public and semi-public uses are no longer appropriate. The proposed general commercial, general plan designation and C-two general commercial zoning district are consistent with the new temporary parking lot use, the surrounding land uses found within the Central Casino Court District of the Downtown Centennial Plan, and future redevelopment of the site. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both applications. Please note that additional electronic comments have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mister Chairman and members of the commission. I really have nothing to add. Obviously, the new owner, Drock Gaming, is not going to use the facility as a courthouse or any other civic use, and so therefore, we're asking for the general plan amendment and the rezoning to accommodate our new temporary use, and then a couple of years, a couple, three years down the road, we're hoping for another use that we'll bring forward to you at that time.
And thank you. And before you go, could you give us your name and address for the record?
I'm so sorry. It's been a long day. My name is Terry Murphy, five-one-six, South Sixth Street.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I'll be abstaining on this item, and the following item, seeing as the justification letter was written by Bunnyfish Studios, who I'm currently constructing an office for.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, I think what's before us tonight is in order based on what was presented last meeting when we did, dealt with the temporary lot issues and the design of the site. It's kind of like all out of whack, but I understand the timing. If there are no comments, I would move to approve it subject to, or approve the GPA.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item twenty-two carries.
And Madam Clerk, if you could change my vote to abstention.
Will do.
And note the abstention of Commissioner Sloman.
And with regards to the zone change, subject to all staff's conditions of approval, move for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. The motion to approve item twenty-three carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Sloman.
Mister Chairman, please note that these items will go forward to the May twenty-first City Council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night. Moving on to related items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, beginning with item twenty-four, which is GPA five-three-zero-three-seven. The applicant owner is Cambridge Companies, Inc., for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from ML Medium Low Density Residential to M Medium Density Residential, north of Washington Avenue on the east side of Sand Hill Road in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Related item twenty-five is Z O N five-three-zero-three-eight, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from R-two Medium Low Density Residential to R-three Medium Density Residential. Staff is recommending denial. Related, related item twenty-six is VAR five-three-one-nine-seven, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a residential adjacency setback of forty-one feet or eighty-three feet is required. Staff is recommending denial. Last related item twenty-seven is SDR five-three-zero-four-zero, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed two-story, forty-unit apartment complex. Staff is recommending denial. And staff, before you give your report, I will be abstaining on items twenty-four through twenty-seven. I represent the applicant's representative, my law firm does, and out of an abundance of caution, I'll be abstaining and hand it over to Commissioner Moody.
Can we have a staff report, please?
Sure. Commissioner, the proposed general plan amendment and associated rezoning are inconsistent with the existing surrounding land uses and will allow for an island of high residential density within an area predominantly composed of single-family residential detached properties to the southeast and west of the subject site. Therefore, staff cannot support the requested general plan amendment and rezoning. Furthermore, the proposed development fails to meet Objective 2.2 of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan to ensure that low-density residential land uses with mature neighborhoods can exist in close proximity to higher-density residential mixed-use or non-residential uses by mitigating adverse impacts where feasible, as evidenced by the site development plan reviews associated variance from residential adjacency standards. Staff finds that the proposed development is neither compatible nor harmonious with the surrounding land uses and recommends denial. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Garcia, your name and address, please.
Chairman, Commissioners, George Garcia, seventeen-eleven Whitney Mesa Drive, Sui Wenton. Pleasure to be before you on this particular item, and if we can go to the overhead, kind of walk you through, try to address some of the comments here that staff's made. But the, I think the most significant thing is anytime you deal with an infill condition, and we're basically at Sand Hill in Washington going, and I'll show you where that is exactly, a little north of it, trying to deal with an infill condition is sometimes the most difficult projects you can imagine, along with redevelopment projects. This piece of property's been passed over for many, many years. You can see highlighted in yellow here, right up against the, the drainage channel here that's constructed. This is Sand Hill, Washington here. These types of infill conditions oftentimes in older neighborhoods are very difficult. One, because the markets pass them over for some particular reason, and I'll explain what some of those problems are. But the opportunity is there to create something that can, and reinvigorate the neighborhood, bring new quality development in, bring new people in that are looking for housing opportunities in a neighborhood, and the city's created an environment to help make that happen. If you look at... you look at the overhead, there's two city parks. One directly across the wash here, a large city park, play fields, facility there with the parking lot. And over here to the immediate west of us, right along the channel, another parking facility. There's also a trail running along the drainage wash. And then there's a bridge. You can see right here, the shadow line. That's a bridge crossing over. The city also just broke ground on another bridge crossing that's going to create a real nice loop that completes the trail system that connects the parks to the residents that are there. So it makes for a great potential neighborhood. But the problem today is that neighborhood already has residents living there. I met with the SEPTED officer, and she pointed out that the residents that are living there are basically homeless. They're living in the channel, and they're also living, if you look at the pictures in your backup, you'll see these very gigantic bushes that they're living in as well. So it's not conducive to the neighborhoods right now and its condition. And we think we can transform it into something that will be very conducive and attractive and provide an alternative to what's currently occurring there. In terms of the zoning and land use, the area has quite a mix at this point. And so when the description is we're an island, you can see there are other areas up to the north where there's R2 here, there's some RPD 16, there's RCL, there's single family. There's a nice blend of different types of housing. I don't think we're an island. I think we contribute to that mix of opportunities and part of what the plan calls for is to provide diverse housing opportunities in the community. And we think we meet that goal and objective of the plan. The interesting situation that makes this project more complicated is infill in an existing neighborhood wasn't difficult enough. On the aerial, you can't see very well, but at the very tip of this triangle, our property in yellow, there's another little triangle that's nine one-hundredths of an acre. And that particular property requires legal access. In fact, if you look at your conditions of approval, condition number 14 says, "Provide public easement to the parcel to the east," and goes on to describe that parcel. So we have to provide legal access to nine one-hundredths of an acre, which isn't, of course, really very much of a buildable site, but, you know, cell tower or something perhaps of that nature. So we are required to provide legal access. So in addition to the challenges of an infill site, we have that requirement to provide access all the way to the east. We also, as you can see, have a very clearly and irregularly shaped lot that creates its own set of challenges as well. So taking all those challenges, then you've got to find, how can you best mitigate? Staff said, how can you make compatibility? How do you mitigate, make it work within the neighborhood? And I think in the prior one discussed about how can you address some of the potential concerns. So here, rather than pushing the buildings up against the homes that are to the south, the RCL to the immediate south, we tried to create a condition where they had a nice, large buffer, large landscaping, great setback to the buildings. And so while at the closest point here, we're about 41 feet, you can see that while we don't meet the requirement here, which is why the variance is required, as we go quickly to the west, we soon get past that problem. But I think more importantly, if somebody were to build RCL lots, there would be none of the buffering. There would be none of that great setback there and the amenities that are provided in this project. And they would still be confronted with the challenges, which probably why it hasn't been developed or providing access. So we've provided a clubhouse, and we're going to have the great wrought iron fence and trail along there for a nice aesthetic attraction and amenity for use by the residents. And then, of course, the architecture itself. We've tried to do something that we think would be a quality project that would fit anywhere in the city. So we've created architectural elevations here. KGA has done a great job of trying to find something that looks attractive for the 40 units we have, create a very roof line. You can see it's not just one big, you know, roof. It's not flat elevation. We've got a lot of articulation in it. We have a lot of changes in materials from standing seam, copper metal roof appearance, and we have the stone, colors, just a lot of things that make it a very attractive and appealing place. So it's not sterile. And so we think we've done a great job and attempted to do everything we can to try to create a living condition that gives better privacy, more buffering, more setback than you would get in a conventional development, and something that can be, overcomes the practical difficulties that variance is a standard, is one of which is, can you, is it create practical difficulties, and go on and so forth. And we think we more than meet that requirement. And I could go on further if you'd like. But we think we've tried to overcome those challenges and turn this infill site, challenge site into something, rather than being a kind of a blight to the neighborhood, turn it into an amenity and attractive and enhance the values. And with that, Mr. Chairman, completing my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item, these items? Please state your name and address.
My name is Elsie Urquia, and I live at 4157 Country Garden Avenue, zip code 89110. I'm here on behalf of my neighbors. We don't want the apartments to be built. We would rather see it be something else. We don't want it to be built because people will be renting it, and there'll be lots of different types of people coming through our neighborhood. The crime rate around there could go up. And the clubhouse is really close to the house. I'm sure no one's going to like to hear that noise. And that basically sums it up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, and I also have all my neighbors' postcards stood. I don't know where to show them right here.
Can you give those to the clerk, please?
And I also have signatures from them. I'm not sure if that's-
Can you tell us how many cards and signatures are there?
I'm not too sure about the cards, but the signature's about 132.
And are they all in protest?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this up for discussion amongst the commission.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. This, we've dealt with a lot of properties down in this area. And I look at the park that has been built and the bridge structure to access the trails. And I gotta, I gotta tell you, you've got a lot of people coming through your neighborhood now, pedestrian-driven, and it's a walkable community, which is what the city has strived to create down here. A lot of dollars have been spent to do that. And this is actually an easier argument than the item before us along Lake Mead. This is an appropriate infill project. I think the developer is, or the applicant has provided an attractive solution for an unattractive location property-wise. With, if the park wasn't there and the bridge wasn't there, I'd agree with you. This is probably, you know, the wrong scenario at the end of that block. But when you look at the way the street structure's been set up, the parks, all of the items there, I don't know what else would go here that would be an enhancement to the neighborhood. The city doesn't have a potful of funds to build another park, which I think they've built a lot in this area. You've got the channel there and the trail system. And in looking at the supplemental of the applicant, I think they've gone a long way to move the multifamily away from the residences. And also, I think the way the clubhouse is structured with a pool, the building is a buffer to any sound corridor that would come westwardly. So I'm going to support the applicant on this because I think this is a tough solution, and this is what we need to start doing to answer our infill issues. So we get some of these properties out of the development cycle and into creating better neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Let's start with Commissioner Quinnon and Commissioner Sloman.
Very briefly, Mr. Garcia, I apologize for not meeting with you on Monday. I had a personal issue come up, and I just blew you off. I apologize dearly. But I wanted to agree with, I did drive the property that day, and I looked at it very closely. And sometimes, to the people that are in protest of this, you don't want to kick a gift horse in the mouth because this is the kind of project that although you hear the word apartment, what you're getting is something that's going to enhance what's behind you, which is just something empty and ugly and, you know, scary. And I can't agree with Commissioner Truesdale more because if we had more of these projects coming into these infill areas, our city would look better and brighter. And I think when this is all said and done, you're going to be happy about it and not mad that it's coming there. So I'm going to support this project as well, but I want the neighbors to know I looked at it very closely with, and I don't live there, and I looked at it very biasly. So you will see my support as well tonight, Mr. Garcia. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, through you. I looked at this. I met with Mr. Garcia. And, you know, I considered all the points. And when we're looking at infill properties such as this, we got to think, what else could go there? Commercial? We're not going to put commercial there. Nobody wants commercial right there in that little corridor. Are you going to build residential, single-family? The answer is no. You could get one row of houses up, but you couldn't put two rows of houses up along that property. And then that whole eastern end, where it comes to a small point, it's basically going to be wasted land because you still have to provide access to that little leftover chunk from that developer. So really, the only thing that would ever fit here and to help clean up this neighborhood would be a project like a multifamily apartment. And seeing as how it backs up to the wash, it has a park, the bridge, I think it's a good fit. Question is, did you reach out to any of the neighbors, talk to any of the neighbors? And Mr. Vice Chair, if I can have Mr. Garcia answer that for me.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Vice Chair, through you. Absolutely. We conducted a neighborhood meeting, and actually, we provided the neighbors with a feedback form and asked them to fill that out and fax it to us, call us, email it, whatever they wanted to do. And we would be happy to have additional discussions or, you know, with them in terms of if there was something we could do to make the project better in terms of landscaping, whatever it might be. So yes, we did reach out to them. Until tonight, this is the first time we've seen any feedback.
Have you considered the type of vegetation, the type of shrubs that you're putting in along the clubhouse and the pool to screen those neighbors from additional sound in the landscaping? Won't drown out a radio, but just have you looked at that landscaping in particular right along that pool and how that'll affect those neighbors?
Again, Mr. Vice Chairman, through you. We've tried to anticipate those as best we could. Now, of course, it's not our home, so that's why we meet with the neighbors to say, try to give us your feedback. So we'd be happy to sit down with the neighbors between now and the city council meeting, certainly have further discussions about the type of landscaping. But I do want to also point out to you, I think, which is important, is I met with the SEPTED officer. So in addition to what we came up, she came up with great suggestions in terms of making sure that we have defensive landscaping, I'll use that term, basically thorny stuff, things like that, in certain key areas to discourage some of the activities that are occurring out there. So we basically are going to take her suggestions and incorporate that into the design. And so happy to make that part of the record, that we want to incorporate those SEPTED planning principles into our design, and certainly it would certainly encourage anybody doing these kind of projects to check with the metro SEPTED officers to do that type of analysis. So yes, we would be happy to meet with them and incorporate those SEPTED design principles.
Commissioner?
No further comments.
Commissioner Bonar?
Yeah, I wanted to commend the designer. I've reviewed a lot of plans on infill properties, done a lot of designs on such properties. This is a really difficult site, and I think the design solution has been imaginative, and you should be commended. I do have one recommendation, and it's along the lines of not just landscaping, but if there could be an overheight wall to block the sound from the clubhouse and the pool especially, against those first probably six or eight houses directly across that common property line, I think you'd benefit at keeping the noise bouncing in toward the, back toward the pool. But I'm in favor of the project design for the density, all the pieces that are needed, including the providing access to that piece of crap piece, that's triangle at the end that you've got. You did it very imaginatively. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonar. I just have a few comments. Number one, it looks like we had approximately 72 postcards that we were handed, and in addition, about 150 signatures. Ms. Nagia?
Elsie Urquia.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your good work. Could we look at the satellite overhead again? You know, as I looked at this and where the park is now with respect to the parcel that's in question, it's too bad that there wasn't some type of land swap because we could have continued residential down where the park is now. But I agree with the other commissioners that this is a really difficult piece of property because of the location and because of the unique shape of it. I don't know what the alternatives are other than what's been proposed today. And so you'll see my support on this as well. And if there are no other comments, I'd invite a motion.
Yes, on, Mr. Vice Chair, on item number 24, due to the testimony that we heard today and considering all facts that it backs up to that wash, and it's an irregular-shaped property, I would make a motion on item number 24, GPA 53037, for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Please vote.
So noted, it's Chair Flengas abstention.
Thank you very much. That motion carries noting the abstention of Commissioner Flengas. Item 25?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, on item 25, for the same reasons as stated on the previous application for item number 25, ZON 53038, I would make a motion for approval.
Please vote. That motion also carries approving item 25. Item 26?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, on item 26, for the same reasons as stated earlier, and considering it's an irregular-shaped property, I would make a motion for approval on VAR 53197.
Please vote. Motion for approval on item 26 carries. And finally, item 27.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, on item number 27, SDR 53040, for all the previously mentioned reasons, I would make a motion for approval and encourage Mr. Garcia to get with those four individuals, get their number, speak to them, think about hours of operation of the pool, and see if you can do anything between now and the city council to help alleviate some of their concerns.
Please vote. Again, noting the abstention of Commissioner Flengas, item 27 carries.
Mr. Vice Chair, please note that these items will go forward to the May 21 city council meeting.
Thank you.
Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Good night.
Good night. Going on now to related items 28 and 29, beginning with item 28, which is GPA 53191. The applicant owner is NVRE LLC for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from RMP Rural Neighborhood Preservation to PCD Planned Community Development on the north side of Centennial Parkway, east of Shamba Road in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 29, ZON 53192, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from U undeveloped RMP Rural Neighborhood Preservation, general plan designation, to PD Plan Development. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this parcel was adopted as part of the Cliffs Edge Development Agreement. It was noted as a non-owner parcel. At that time, no rezoning or general- It was noted as a non-owner parcel. At that time, no rezoning or general plan action was taken, so it is part of the Cliffs Edge Master Plan Community. However, the formal zoning and master plan changes were never adopted. This would bring this parcel into conformance with those requirements, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. May I hear from the applicant? Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Ron Porter, 3425 Cliff Shadows Parkway, and I represent the applicant, NVREL LLC. As Mr. Rankin noted, this parcel was, I guess we'd call it a remnant parcel, as a holdover from the Intention of Council way back in 2004 when they passed the Cliffs Edge Master Plan. But this was a county piece that we just recently had annexed into the city. And so with that annexation comes in conforming GPA amendment and also the reclassification for the zoning, which is again already included into the Cliffs Edge Master Plan. So we're basically just completing the cycle and bringing that parcel in to make the Cliffs Edge Master Plan whole. So with that briefly stated, we would request your approval this evening.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on either of these items? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll follow, I mean, I'll make a motion for item 28, GPA 53191, to approve, follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 28 carries.
And with regard to item 29, ZON 53192, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 29 carries.
Mr. Chairman, these items will go forward to the May 21 city council meeting.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and may I thank the Commission for your faithful service to our community.
Thank you. Going on to item 30, which is ZON 53065. The applicant owner is Cheetac Development Corporation. For possible action on a request for rezoning from C1 Limited Commercial to C2 General Commercial at 2202 through 2252 Paradise Road in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may I have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to stand on this item as much I have an interest in this property.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has indicated that proposed C2 zoning district will help facilitate redevelopment and reinvestment of the subject property. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning as the requested C2 zoning district would allow for conformance with the underlying C Commercial General Plan Land Use category.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant? Good evening.
Chairman, members of the Commission, Justin Michaels, 820 Rancho Lane, Suite 85, here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is asking for a zoning change to C2. The applicant owns an adjoining parcel which already has the existing C2 zoning designation, so she's just trying to bring all of it into line.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number 30, ZON 53065, I'd make a motion to follow staff's recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 30 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item goes forward to the May 21 city council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to item 31, VAR 53020. Applicant owner is Lisa Hogsett. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 96-square-foot accessory structure, Class 2, to be located 2.5 feet from the principal dwelling unit, where 6 feet is the minimum distance required, at 7937 Bridge Gate Drive in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that there's no unique or extraordinary evidence has been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, this hardship is self-opposed and recommends denial of the request.
Thank you. May I hear from the applicants, please? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Boris Miloradovich, and I live at 7937 Bridge Gate Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. I had to recently move from my house, and I needed storage. And Lisa, who is right here, the owner of the property, suggested that we buy a small shed and construct that shed. And we located it on a property where we thought it would be most attractive for our home and serve our needs. It's a small shed, 8 by 12. It's less than 300 square feet, which did not require any permit, to our knowledge. And low and behold, we were served some non-compliance paper saying that we were in violation of certain setbacks. And we ask that we reconsider those and give us an approval for our storage shed. It does not have electricity. We did go to some meetings with the Planning Commission, and from those meetings, we felt pretty confident that it would be approved. I have a storage of books and other items in that shed, nothing hazardous or liquid flammable. So I beg the Commission's approval of our shed, our storage shed. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you. Do any members of the -- excuse me, ma'am, did you want to be heard on this as an applicant? If you do, please state your name and address, please.
I would like to, but I'm just, I can't, I'm not feeling very well.
All right, thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Mr. Murakovich?
Milo Radovich.
Did you put those little roof tiles on the little shed? Did you put those roof tiles on that shed?
We had a gentleman put those roof tiles. They matched the existing building. They're, it's very attractive.
They really are. And here's how I feel about it. If it's not bothering your neighbors to the side of you--
We have signatures.
And that nobody's here to complain about it, it's not bothering me. And so you will see my support on this little item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll speak on this a moment. My one concern on this was that did not go through the process, and so I think it's addressed adequately in condition number two, which says, "All necessary building permits shall be obtained and final inspections shall be completed in compliance with Title 19 and all codes as required by the Department of Building and Safety." What we're going to need to do is you need to understand that second condition, where you're going to have to go to the Building Department and, you know, see whether or not you need a permit or not.
We did. We had a safety inspector with us at a meeting.
And you've paid your fees and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Too much.
All right. I have nothing further. Any other Commissioners wish to be heard?
Just a quick question. Normally, if the neighbors are okay with this, I would be too, but there is a neighbor of yours who did oppose this. Do you know where they live and proximity?
I don't know of any neighbors who--
Well, it's in our backup, so there is somebody.
Did not consent to this.
Do you have the immediate neighbors agreement?
Immediate neighbor--
Yes, my name is Lisa Hogsett. I've lived there since 1991. I have a neighbor to the west that purchased the home eight years ago and never moved in. I have one neighbor to my east that's been there since I've lived there. And I'm on a curve, so there really is nobody. I look right down the street. There's, I don't know who would oppose that, but I do have several signatures here from my neighbors. And also, there are 51 other variances, building variances in desert shores already.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Moody?
I do have a quick question for staff, through you, Mr. Chair, and that is, if they go seek a building permit, could that be granted considering the setback requirement?
With the approval of the variance, it could be. I'm not sure if this requires a permit or not. It does require setbacks, though, even though it may not need a building permit pursuant to the adopted building code. It still has to meet zoning setbacks. So if the variance is approved and it does need a permit, then they could issue the permit.
Let me just say, you know, one of my concerns as I look at this, they've done a good job, you know, with how it looks. I like the roof tile. But it does seem somewhat of a fire hazard. I mean, if there are books inside there and there's a potential for fire, it seems too close to the home and too close to the wall, which is why we have those setbacks. So I'm wrestling with this one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Slavon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you. All necessary building permits shall be obtained and final inspections shall be completed in compliance with Title 19. So basically, I think that what this says is they have to go down to the Building Department, and the Building Department will tell them if they need a building permit.
We've done that already. We were told if it's under 300 feet, you don't need a permit.
Thank you. But let me--
I'm broke. I don't have any--
I know, but please, if I can talk right now, not lose my train of thought.
Please let the Commissioner speak, and thank you.
Building permits for something like this should only cost them a few hundred dollars. So the Building Department will tell them if they need to come out and do an inspection, they feel that it's a fire hazard, they'll make them put up a one-hour firewall on it, which can be easily achieved with 5/8 drywall inside and out, and they can find a UL listing on that. So condition number two is in here for a reason, and if anything's needed, the Building Department will make them do it. The only thing that I would say to whoever makes the motion tonight, possibly to put a timeframe on this, three to six months, or else it might go a year, year and a half, without getting a permit.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioners? Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Of item number 31, variance 53020, I make the motion for approval and that within six months-- What do I want to say?
Comply with condition two within six months.
You follow condition number two, and that is rectified between you and the City of Las Vegas, and then you'll be good to go. So with that, I make the motion for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 31 carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Item number 32, VAR 53064. The applicant owner is Evaps LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a one-foot setback from the public right-of-way for a proposed sign, where 5 feet is required, at 400 South 7th Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
The applicant is proposing to place a 10-foot-tall, 30-square-foot double-faced, non-illuminated monument sign on the east front edge of the property. Zero-foot setbacks on all sides of the property were previously approved, and the portion of the building nearest the proposed sign location has been constructed 8 feet from the corner side property line. This results in a 3-foot envelope within which to place a freestanding signage without encroaching into the public right-of-way. A variance is being sought for a 1-foot sign setback from the right-of-way line of 7th Street. There are currently no existing signs along 7th Street front edge adjacent to this property. Other types of signs could be proposed that conform to Title 19 requirements and not require variance. As such, staff finds this request to be a self-imposed hardship and recommends denial.
Thank you. And can we hear from the applicant, please?
Yeah, my name is Rich Standard. I live at 6308 Mint Frost Way. I'm representing the applicant. I just want to double-check. Everyone's read the justification letter that was submitted? You have that?
Yeah, it's in our backup material.
Okay, thank you. I just want to also add to it that due to the unusual setback, typically all the monument signs in that area are about 10 feet from like in the sidewalk to the leaning edge of the sign. This one's 15 feet. And due to the nature of it, I mean, I think it's imperative that people who drive there are able to see the tenants inside there. You have the academy across the street, and I think people are going to start slowing down, trying to find out, you know, where this lawyer is or who this tenant is. And it's going to create somewhat of a traffic nuisance there. Also, further down, there's one sign that I just looked at today that's only 26 inches back of right-of-way. So the sign, I feel is very aesthetic. It ties into the building there, and it's going to help the people, pedestrians and traffic, find out who the tenants are in there.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, through you. I drove by the site today, and, I mean, this building looks beautiful, but, I mean, it's a huge building, and you built all the way out to as much as you possibly could build on. I think that this, I mean, listening to staff and reading the reports, this sign could actually be developed in a way that it could be a projected wall-mounted sign and be in compliance with Title 19. We wouldn't be here for what a variance today. This almost should have been one of those things considered when we were developing the entire site if we wanted to do this. So it's more of a self-imposed hardship than anything else. And I just don't see how I can find any justification for this, for this type of a sign.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bonar, do you want to be heard?
Yes, please. Yeah, I was a little taken back by even the request to do this when an on-building sign was probably more appropriate. But I guess I always take offense to somebody who does a wonderful design on a project and forgets to do the signs. So mea culpa that I didn't catch it during the design phase, but similarly, I think maybe this ought to be a wake-up call that the sign should have been done with the building, as part of the building. And almost for that reason, using the only place where there's any landscaping for this purpose, just upset me. So I'm not going to support the act of--
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. There are other signage lettering on the building that is very visible and readable, and really building appropriate. I think a building like this is architecturally very nice. The tenants, the developer did a real, I mean, the law firm did a great job of trying to create iconic office there. And candidly, anybody that knows the law firm is going to know where they're going, and this sign is just redundant fill. You've got a sign face there. If you look at the elevation before us right now on that, where you've got actually a recessed wall that would provide great identity for individual tenants in on-building signage, and be very readable. If you look at even the entrance and exit of the parking, that's very-- that's very readable. So for that reason, I'll go ahead and follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Could I ask you, you're talking about having the--
Excuse me, sir. We're going to, this is with the Commissioners right now.
Okay.
I apologize, but anybody else on the Commission wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
My motion was to follow staff's recommendation for denial on this item.
Thank you. Motion to deny carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Item number 33, SDR 53067, the applicant is Citra Real Estate Capital. The owner is City Parkway 5, Inc., et al. For possible action on a request for site development plan review for a proposed three-building, 318,975 square-foot mixed-use development consisting of assisted living apartments, senior citizen apartments, general retail, and office space with a six-level parking facility with waivers of Symphony Park building design, service access, and streetscape standards at the southeast corner of City Parkway and Clark Avenue in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, technical aspects of the development have been reviewed and conditionally approved by the Symphony Park Design Review Committee, but the project is subject to further Symphony Park Design Review Committee review prior to final approval. Concerns over building and streetscape design will need to be addressed by the Design Review Committee. Staff follows the Symphony Park Design Review Committee's recommendation for approval as conditioned as the proposal is generally compatible with the surrounding development and uses.
Thank you. Can I hear from the applicant, please? Good evening.
Landon Christopherson, 2362 North Green Valley Parkway Henderson, Nevada. Here representing the applicant. We'd first like to thank staff for their diligent work and flexibility on getting this project before you, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, for staff, in their presentation, I mean, it's a wonderful-looking building. I think it's eclectic for the city center development scape over there. But if I understood correctly, staff say we're, we approve this and then it'll go back for more changes with the Architectural Review Committee? Or are we seeing a final submittal here?
Well, there may be some changes.
I mean, as a planning commission, I think we'd like to see the final that's being presented because we're going to recommend it or approve it, not another body, I don't think, unless the charter changed when I was--
Well, those changes that are, that may occur are within the preview of the Symphony Park Design Review Committee and can be approved by them without action of the Planning Commission itself. The major items that you're approving are under your preview, which are part of this design. There were some questions regarding, I'm not sure specifically what they are, but they, they had, they were in relationship to the streetscape design and the building itself for some of the architectural review.
Right. And I understand, I like to say, I think this is a great building, but if I understand the role of the Planning Commission, we're final, this is a final action approval here. And if it's final action, we're giving final approval to something that isn't final. I, do you understand my conundrum here? And I always don't like conundrums because I don't know what they mean anyway. And I want to support this. I don't want to say, you know, well, I don't know what I'm looking at, so I recommend denial. I don't think that's what should happen here, but I think this is like giving a tavern permit and then say, you know, they get to make it as big as they want and however they want. I, we, I don't think it's the purview of the Planning Commission to give blank checks on entitlements. So.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else?
Rick, we really are agreeing on a lot of things tonight. I just, I just absolutely agree with you, Commissioner Truesdale, on this, so we'll see what happens from here.
Can I just say that I think it's a conundrum that Commissioner Truesdale doesn't like it, or doesn't like conundrums, but doesn't know what it means?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, it was indicated in the staff report that there is the need for one additional meeting with the Symphony Park Design Review Committee. Has that meeting been scheduled?
Yes, it has.
And when is the date of that meeting?
We have to go before City Council, so we have to meet two weeks before that City Council meeting to have all resolutions and all conditions met.
Okay, so that meeting has been scheduled?
Yes, it's, I believe, the middle of May.
Here is some additional information for the Commissioners. This item doesn't necessarily need to go before City Council. It could be final action at Planning Commission. If it is the desire of the Planning Commission to see this after the Symphony Park Design Review Committee has done their final review, what we might do is have it come back to Planning Commission next month, which actually puts you on the same schedule as if you were to go to City Council. And so that doesn't delay you in any way, shape, or form. And actually, it might get you done a week earlier in the process if you come back to Planning Commission next month with your final approval from the Symphony Park Design Review Committee. And so that's what I might suggest if the Planning Commission is uncomfortable approving this item tonight, is that we do see it on May the 13th, and then it can be final action at that meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Boner?
I hate to be practical, and, but I got a question, and maybe it's just my ignorance of the topic. If this is area that's now used for parking for Smith Center, is that parking going to be replaced somewhere else incorporated within this? What's the functional relationship, if I'm going to ask?
Mr. Director?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I'll go ahead and respond to that question. The city parking garage that's located on Main Street that we use for the city hall, as you'll recall, the bridge has been built to Symphony Park. That will serve some of the need for parking there on the site. And then as individual buildings are constructed, obviously, they'll be providing their own parking. So there's a combination of methods that we'll use to achieve the parking needs for Symphony Park.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners wish to be heard? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to take the Director's recommendation and have this go to the Symphony Park Design Review, and then we can act on it appropriately, and I think it would be the best approach.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to abey this matter to the May 13, 2014 meeting approved.
Thank you, Jim.
Moving on now to Director's business, which, starting with, which is item 34, TXT 52778. The applicant owner is City of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action to amend LVMC 19.12 and 19.18 to add regulations for farmers' markets as part of the open-air vending slash transient sales lot use and to provide for other related matters. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, last year, the Planning Commission heard and recommended for adoption by City Council, and subsequently, the City Council adopted our food access policy guide for fresh food. Part of that was to reduce regulations for farmers' market and provide for their opportunities within the city. This update to the open-air vending transient sales lot use would include a farmer's market. It would allow them to go in versus, as you've seen on previous applications where they've come in as swap meets. Our farmer markets are a little unusual here in Las Vegas. They, we don't have a lot of farms within too close, so we tend to get one or two farms coming into a farmer's market, and then we do have some handcrafted items that tend to come as part of those, candles and the kettle corn and such. And this would allow those opportunities for still some fresh food to be available much easier than going through the process of being a swap meet itself. And there are conditions that are placed upon that to limit them to, specifically, to farmer's markets with fresh food and handcrafted items.
Thank you. Do any, do any Members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion or possible motion by the Commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
I commend staff for their hard work on this item and would move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 34 carries. And I'll take the Director's portion right there. This item will be forwarded to the City Council in ordinance form. Going in now into citizens' participation, the last item tonight. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
My name is Tomaholdup, 501 Duke Avenue, North Las Vegas, Nevada, 89030. Before I started, I wanted to ask you guys, how do you go about ending up on the actual criteria, the itinerary that you guys are going through? How does that happen? Do you go to a town hall meeting, or do you have to call in? How does that work?
The, wait, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I can go ahead and respond to that. This is the Planning Commission who considers issues relative to zoning and land use. And so the only items that you will see on this agenda are those that are submitted by applicants who are applying for entitlements of zoning and land use. And so that's the sole subject of these types of meetings.
Well, how do you go about doing that? That's what I'm asking.
If you wish to build a building or do development, then you meet with the Department of Planning staff for a pre-application conference?
No, not that, Dr. F. I'm saying like, okay, in other words, if, if you're just trying to, because you guys have different meetings, you don't just have the planning. Sometimes it's zoning. Other times, it's just dealing with people giving their infractions about wanting a sign here and so on and so forth. So I'm asking, how do you go about, how does a citizen go about ending up on the itinerary? Because the reason why I'm saying that is you are able to speak to you guys for a longer length of time than just the citizen's participation, as Chairman has said. You only have three minutes, three minutes on something that's outside of the agenda. So I'm asking, how do you go about, because I've seen in the past where it says, and if you end up calling for the town hall meetings, because a lot of the members that are, that are before us right now, probably including yourself, have been handpicked by the town hall members.
Sir, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you and just kind of short-circuit and give you an answer to your question.
Okay.
As the Director's pointed out to you, this is for land use issues. If you want to build a building, if you want to get a special use permit, you will apply at City Planning. If you want to talk on any item as a citizen, you do not have to be on the agenda. I always open it up, as Chairman of the Planning Commission, we open it up for discussion amongst the general, amongst the, amongst the public. And if you do have a comment, you're allowed to come up, as long as your comment is restricted to what's before the Commission, and that's it. Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I understand it, but I'm still not getting, I guess you guys probably are tied up of, you're thinking of two different things.
I think what you're confused with, sir, is this is not a public forum to discuss everything. This is strictly land use things. People apply to do something with their property. They come here to get an approval from us or whatever the case may be.
Right.
Members of the public can talk on that specific item and that specific item only. Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in case there's a confusion, if you want to go to the community meetings when there are community meetings, you have to keep up with the agenda of what community meetings are coming forward.
Okay.
You can get that information from staff--
Okay.
--as to what all these applications are, and you're allowed to speak with, on any issue that you have a comment during the public hearing.
That's what I'm talking about. Because in North Town, they have a segment that shows that they have, what's it called? It's like a citizen participation that deals with, you know, on every second and every, you know, fourth week or whatnot that's pertaining to this. And it might not be, and it's completely outside of you guys' big meeting.
That would be a different set of meetings than this. That's correct.
Yeah, that's my, that's my answer. But I wanted to conclude, to draw your attention to, is that I'm here because I know I've been here multiple times or whatnot, many times actually for over a four-year period, and come to the knowledge of that the overall understanding that what all this is resultant of is what I have brought to the table is pertaining to identity theft. And as it reads in the handbook, as you see, and hopefully, Dr., Mr. Chairman, that you don't take my book from me when we leave, I did read your restrictions saying that you guys will apprehend the material that's shown. So I don't want, that's why I'm not going to bring it up to you. I just want to show you that it's actually that. I don't want to leave here without my, without my material.
Sir, I appreciate it, but I need to--
This is my evidence.
No, I appreciate it, but really, for this portion right here, this isn't a free forum to just talk about anything.
Oh, this is not what I'm talking about. This is talking about my identity.
Understand, but really, all we can talk about here is, you know, you have to talk about things that are within our jurisdiction. The topics you are talking about there are not within our jurisdiction.
Oh, well, that was, Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry.
So in any event, I suggest you, you know, you can go to the city and county websites or whatever and look for the appropriate forums to, you know, bring your grievance or whatever the case may be. But to talk about identity theft and that, that's really not within the jurisdiction of this board.
Well, as far as Mr. Goodman is concerned, he allowed us to speak about whatever topic was outside of the actual agenda. He would give us those moments or whatnot, and then he would respond to them the way that he thought was fit. He served for 12 years. And then his wife, and I know that you're the Chairman and sitting, and I'm not trying to disrespect you by any means, but she has done the exact same thing, where the agenda might be, as you guys have already spoken about, one thing, and then when the participant, the citizen comes up, they get to speak about whatever it is, and then she'll decide to direct them to whatever matter that is.
Sir, I think, I think the Chairman's been pretty clear. What you're talking about is City Council, and the City Council has the purview over the entire city. We only have the purview over land use. If you want to talk about all of these other items, the City Council would be your venue to go.
The City Council of where? What do you mean?
Of Las Vegas, where the mayor--
Clark County?
Or, no, City of Las Vegas, where Mayor Goodman is and the other county, or City Councilman.
I came down here tonight, and I'm thinking that I was going to face, going to face her along with, you know--
But she's not part of this committee.
Yeah, I didn't know that. When I asked, when I asked the staff--
We can't change it tonight, so I think, you know, I checked with the schedule, and you'll find when the City Council meeting is, and they'd love to have you.
When I asked, when I asked the staff out there, they said that this meeting was going to pertain to them--
Excuse me, sir, I'm going to let Commissioner go and speak.
You know what? Let's go ahead and wrap up for the sake of this, and I'll meet with you after the meeting and explain the jurisdictions. As a matter of fact, you grew up on Duke Street in Regla Estates. I'm from Valley View. We're right around the corner. Right after this meeting, I'll talk to you and explain how it go. It's a little bit different in North Las Vegas where they, if you want to speak at their public City Council meetings, you can actually fill out a card--
Right.
--and then the mayor will read them, and you can come up. We don't do that here, and we are a, we are a recommending board to Mayor Goodman.
Right.
So this would not be your place because we can only, I mean, let's put it in a sports analogy. We can only, if you want to talk football, we're only about basketball, so we can't talk football at this meeting. But I can get you to the meeting where you can talk about football, basketball, track, wrestling, or whatever you want. So let's go ahead and convene the meeting. I'll get with you after that, and we'll get you on your way.
Well, why is it that the actual staff--
Sir, I think we've answered the questions, and so I think--
I'll answer that for you right after, right after the meeting.
Okay, we're going to go ahead. Any other Members of the public wish to be heard?
But I didn't get any of my three minutes. You guys took every--
Sir, you've had about 15 now.
You've had about 15 since you--
I didn't have 15 minutes. All I did was ask how you get on the itinerary.
Sir, sir, yeah, we-- Sir, sir, yeah, we've been, everybody up here has explained it to you, and Commissioner Goyens is going to take time with you after this is over to talk to you for a minute or two and try to help you to find the forum that you're looking for. And I appreciate your time. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at this juncture. This meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.